All right, so good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May first Litchfield School Board Meeting. The time is now five thirty. We'll call the meeting's order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Massachusetts, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have remote participation this evening. I will entertain a motion to allow remote participation. I have a motion by Mr. Shoemaker, a second by Ms. Harrison. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Roll call?
We'll do roll call after this vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. And Ms. Ames, if you would just indicate the reason why you're remote this evening, and if anybody's with you, please.
Sure, I am COVID positive and I don't want to spread my germs and no one's in the room that's up my dog.
All right, well, we hope you feel better soon, and thank you for joining tonight virtually. Just by matter of order, we will do roll call vote for the rest of the evening. Great. Any changes or additions to tonight's agenda from anybody?
The only thing I think that I want to address with F I C is possibly taking some action on the current providers like the RFP and RFQ that are outstanding for the projects that fails.
Okay. We'll add that to the Facilities Committee Report on Rural Business.
Okay.
Anything else this evening? All right, hearing none. We'll move into consent agenda. Any board members wish to move anything off the consent agenda and into our regular standing agenda this evening? All right, hearing none. We'll move into the summary of non-public actions from April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Shoemaker motioned to approve the April third, two thousand twenty-four, non-public minutes. Mr. Plansky seconded that motion, and the motion ended up being withdrawn, so it was a zero-zero. Ms. Harrison motioned to approve the resignation of Mr. Totten, effective at the end of his contract. Mrs. Ames seconded the motion, and that motion sadly passed five-zero-zero. Mr. Plansky motioned to approve the resignation of Mary Whitman, effective at the end of the contract. Mr. Shoemaker seconded that motion. That motion also sadly passed five-zero-zero. Mrs. Ames motioned to approve the resignation of Amanda Doian. Did I say that name correctly? Apologies if I didn't, thank you. Effective at the end of the contract, Mrs. Harrison seconded the motion. That motion passed five-zero-zero. Mr. Shoemaker motioned to approve the resignation of Haley Legesse. Thank you. Effective at the end of the contract, Mr. Cutter seconded that motion. The motion passed five-zero-zero. Mrs. Harrison motioned to approve the retirement of Denise Freeman, effective at the end of the contract. Mrs. Ames seconded that motion. That motion passed five-zero-zero. Mr. Shoemaker motioned to adjourn the non-public session at seven twenty-nine P M. Mrs. Harrison seconded that motion, and that motion passed five-zero-zero. With that, we do have presentations and recollections this evening. We have Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Fowler with us this evening to present. Can I invite you up to the table?
Good evening.
Hi.
So I have my short and sweet kind of report. So I E Ps by school, the numbers only changed a little bit. G M S is up to eighty-five. They were eighty-two, so I did a comparison so that you could see last board reports numbers. L M S is at sixty-nine. There were seventy-one, so there are two. C H S is seventy-eight. They were at eighty-six. Out of district, which is the other charter, out of district private schools, fifteen, that stayed the same. So total active in the district are two hundred and forty-seven. In March, there were two hundred and fifty. E L L support by school, I believe all of that stayed the same, which means nobody moved in, nobody moved out. No new identified students. Five oh fours, G M S is up to fifty. In March, there were forty-four. L M S is at forty-eight. In March, there were forty-nine. And C H S is at sixty-two. In March, there were sixty-three, so their total of one hundred and sixty there. So district updates. So currently, over school vacation, I spent quite a bit of time helping to kind of pull together E S Y. We had a lot of, I'm going to say, non-responses from special educators, so we tried to get those in to get our solid numbers for extended school year. This does not include like summer academies or anything like that. It's just the specially designed and portion, specially designed instruction portion of it. So those numbers were shared with principals and assistant principals. The in-it was also a staff response of who wanted to come and work E S Y. So those responses were shared with the team leads. So we have leads for the summer. We have Danielle Peckham, Corey Salzen, and Jessica Anikopoulos. So that information was shared with them so that they can continue to move forward planning for extended school year. So what else came through, and right in the middle of vacation last week, was Title IX has come down with some new guidance documents. So I spent a lot of time kind of digging into Title IX, but Holly and I are going to join, and Renee is going to join. So Drummond and Woodson is putting on a law conference around that, so I signed the three of us up to go to that law conference to kind of see the guidance documents from what's come down. There have been some documents straight from the U S D O E that have come down. So I've got kind of an idea of those things that will be happening, but you can look forward to some recommendations on our Title IX policy moving forward. And then I would like to have some families join me. So I have been working with some families on a Special Education Parent Alliance. I don't know, is that Link Live?
We have it in our agenda.
Okay, so you can see it?
Yeah.
So there was a lot of work that was done around creating the alliance for special education families and the school district to be able to come together and create a bit of a group so that we could move forward doing connecting families throughout the district that are special education, as well as have some families if we need trainings in certain areas. So there's like the Parent Information Center and Gateway's Community Services is our area agency to make parents aware of other resources and things that are out there besides the school district for special education families. So is there anything that we wanted to say?
Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Bring your chair.
I'm Samantha McClelland. So many of us have been meeting for the past year or two, and many of you probably have received many of our letters. And so we decided prior to this to make a group of parents with special needs. And with the help of Mrs. McGary and Mrs. Fowler, we've now decided to make it official in the district and so that we can create a community between the three different schools and just make a caring, encouraging community for all of the parents with special needs. Did you have any questions? I made flyers, but you already got one, so.
Thank you very much. I think this is fantastic.
Yep, we landed on dates for next year. We have booked Litchfield Middle School as kind of our common ground. So we'll be meeting the second Tuesday of every month and bringing this forward. The hope is that with the last six weeks of school, I know the schools send out their weekly updates, so hoping to get into those weekly updates, our calendar for next year, so that we make parents aware of it starting this year for what's to happen in September.
And we've decided like during the open houses, one of us will go to each of the open houses, pass out information. It's a great idea, so.
And is the idea also that this Community Birth Parent Alliance will help inform decisions on how special education is wrong and where maybe changes are needed? Is that kind of the vision behind this?
Yep. So part of it, too, is to kind of take a look at what is available in the district, what we have in the district. And then, because on the parent's side, that input is really important for maybe what's working or what's not working. And then that way to come together and help facilitate some of those conversations moving forward for improvement. Absolutely.
I'm sure it's the other way around, too, right? Vice versa, where you're helping educate some of the legality behind what we do, how we do it, and making sure everyone's informed as well.
Yep, so some of those conversations did happen actually while we were having those conversations about setting up this group, about, there were some questions about that. So those kinds of things also did happen, absolutely.
Any questions from the board?
No, I just think the more communication and partnership and support we can get for all around is better for our district and our families and our kids, so.
We want to give a voice to.
Yeah, and I appreciate you four coming forward. I know you're not, yeah, I know it's a big time. You're already so over-involved in other things, so thank you for carving out time to do this. Thank you.
Ms. Ames, anything to add?
No, I echo Tina's comments.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we also have our curriculum update this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will turn my name tag even though it's wrong. I'm now Mary Sullivan, as I notified you guys fairly recently. So I sent along the, my little board report, and I just want to highlight a few things before digging into some data with this group. As my time here ends at the end of June, we are starting to transition some of the really important pieces that we have made huge strides on in the district to, to staff, so that they are able to carry some of those things on. The biggest one being live to learn. I have, we've already started the planning for the June week, but typically we do a June week and an August week, and with new people coming on board, we don't have that. I'm not going to allocate somebody else's time and money for something that, you know, is, they may not see as a priority. But what we've done in lieu of that is really tried to transition the planning back to the P D committee. The majority of the planning for that event has typically fallen in my lap. And at our last P D committee meeting, we had a long talk about, you know, did we want to transition it to the committee so that it was something that could be carried on if they felt there was value to it? So that this year, it's sort of a joint plan, and we're putting out calls to, for presenters right now. We have about seven already. I'm hoping for a few more before the deadline on Friday. So typically what we do is I call for presenters and then we put out like a mock schedule and people sign up so that we can get an idea of how many people, who has interest in this different session, so that we can... Sometimes we have to run two of the same session if there's a lot of interest, or sometimes unfortunately there is an interest in a session, so we won't run it. But that's in the works. Grading and reporting, we did a big data dive on semester one grades with the formatives counting versus the formatives not counting in our grading and reporting meeting. It didn't give us clear-cut guidelines like we had hoped, or clear-cut data that would inform us one way or the other. And so the team decided that they really wanted to survey staff and get more of the, like, boots-on-the-ground data. And so that is going out to staff at the faculty meetings this week. So we will have that data back for our meeting in May so that we can take a look at it and have a better, more rounded report of where we think we are at in terms of the data around the grading of summatives and formatives. We also began discussing consistent grading practices and understanding modifications and accommodations. We do a lot of training on that, but there's still a lot of questions, inconsistencies, and confusion on how do we make that look for all of our kids? So we just scratched the surface with that and have sort of laid out a little bit of a plan of how to end the year with asking the right questions and getting things lined up to move into next year. There is one thing that needs action from this group, and that is Litchfield Curriculum Committee did approve an A P Psychology book for our upcoming A P Psych course. It is a free textbook, so that's a huge plus. It's actually a college-level source that a lot of the local colleges are using. So Mr. Benoit has moved that forward. We've all taken a look at it. It really is... I think it's a great resource, especially because of the level, but also that it doesn't cost us any money. And I guess they started using it as a support resource with A P Environmental Science this year. That's how it kind of came to light for us. So that will need approval as it is a new text source.
I'll make a motion to approve the A P Psychology textbook.
I'll second.
In a second. Any additional discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Plansky?
Aye.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Aye.
I am an aye. Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
And Ms. Ames?
I'm an aye. Aye.
Motion carries five-zero-zero.
Excellent. And so the last thing that I wanted to talk about was data and assessment. We are in the throes of S A S right now. We've already done the eleventh grade science and the writing grades three to eight. The reason that the writing was done so early this year is because the state is recalibrating the test. So typically, the writing has been scored automatically. This year, we had to do it pen to paper and mail and send them in for actual human scoring so that we can recalibrate as a state. The S A T scores, they have just posted as a file for, to the College Board, which I would assume means that they are coming out to students in the very near future if they haven't already. So do you know if they have, right?
Yeah, we have a score, exactly.
Okay. So those came out last week to us, so I assume that they've come out to most of the students at this point. So the last thing here is something that I wanted to share with the board. It's the second year that I've done this. Last year, I shared it with the admin team, and we had a lot of discussion and a lot of... We tried to do some action planning around it at the building level. But this year, I, in looking at it again and seeing not as significant a change as we had hoped, I did want to bring it forward and let the board see what we were looking at in terms of our data comparison to our peer cohort. So actually, Tina, I think you may have only been the only one on the board when we actually made our peer cohort. But when Mike and I first started here, we voted on a peer cohort of schools in the area that are either single-town schools, like-size schools, like socioeconomic, so that we could take a look at where we were and where we wanted to go. So what you'll see as you look, they are tabbed at the bottom by grade level, and I am not going to go through. I sent this out to you guys last week, so you could digest it a little bit ahead of time. But what you'll see is the school, and then I highlighted where Litchfield falls in yellow and where the state falls in green. So again, we've... We're not saying we need to be number one, but we definitely should be, in my opinion, overperforming the state average. We have, we have amazing teachers. We have great resources. The fact that we are underperforming the state is something that we need to pay attention to and we need to work on.
One of the biggest differences, if I may ask a question, one of the biggest differences as I went through this, notably was grade five. Can you just help me understand that a little bit?
It's actually the most consistent, last year to this year. We've always seen a dip in grade five, and we don't know if it's the transition from fourth, I mean, really, the transition from four to five to element, from elementary to middle. We've identified some gaps in the instruction at grade four that were identified early on, but I don't think were as focused on until this year. So I hope we will see that gap change. And the other thing that I did at the start of this year to help, because we are, we have a curriculum and we have a program. And the program, because programs are written for all states, regardless of the standards, regardless of what the priorities are, regardless of where they set their, their levels, the program can't be the curriculum because it doesn't fully align. And that is where we run into some, some issues, is that when we follow the program with fidelity, we are often spending more time in an area that is not assessed standard. It might be an introduced standard. One of the big ones that we've, we've identified is fourth grade. We spend a ton of time on division. Division's supposed to be introduced in fourth grade with the focus on division being understanding of fractions, not
Long division.
Long division. So we've been trying to move the needle on spending more time on fractions, less time on long division, but the problem is the program is written with a huge focus on long division. So that's a huge shift, especially in the elementary levels. And really, I extend that through grade six. So one of the things that we did this year is I took the program, the standards, and our curriculum and, and did a full crosswalk by standard of where is it in our curriculum units? Where is it in the textbook? And then I made notes for teachers to be able to put in, when are they instructing it and when is it being assessed? In hopes to really make sure that that vertical sequence that we have completed, that we have planned out, that we have laid out, that should align better with the state scores, is being focused on and is more at the forefront of everybody's planning.
So can you just help me understand the difference between program and curriculum?
Sure. So a program is your textbook.
Okay.
Curriculum is, we have state standards that are, they differ state to state. You know, math and E L A are probably the most common because many states use the same standards that we do, but not all. And unfortunately, textbook companies are there to make money, so they are written to be able to adjust to whatever standards you're using. Our curriculum is based off of the state standards with the alignment to, we look at the testing. We look at what are the skills that need to be developed. So each set of standards has standards, then usually skills that have to be, are expected to be either introduced or met at that level.
So going back to the program, though, have you looked at, like, whether other districts in our cohort are using a different program?
Every different, I will tell you, because this is a really common conversation in the C I A circles with math and reading, which are the big ones, every district's using a different program. Every district, like, there is very little commonality because there just isn't.
There's that many different programs?
There are that many different programs, yeah.
And there's not a perfect program. And unfortunately, it's a huge shift. I'll be honest, in my last district, we went away from programs. We went strictly off of resources to support the curriculum.
There are districts that do that.
There are, but it's a huge, it's a huge philosophical shift. And one that, you know, Dan and I have had a lot of conversations about, but not one that either one of us has felt that we're ready for. Unfortunately, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a heavy lift. It's a lot of training and it's a lot of reclassifying how you think of education and how you think of your craft. And, you know, when we have teachers, and we are a lucky district in that we have teachers that have been here for a long time.
So just for my own, like, benefit, just like, around my head around it, I'm looking at grade four, because you looked at grade five, and I just wanted to see how grade four was, and it was actually very similar with the exception of E L A. But do you happen to know with respect, like, to Bedford, who is basically twice above, like, eighty-five percent above proficiency in almost every area?
They use the same math program we have.
They use the same one that we use?
Yes.
Yes, because I work there as a math tutor.
So what are we doing differently?
Yeah, that's the question.
So, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot that we do differently. We, Bedford, I work in Bedford with another math tutor. I believe we have two at our elementary school as well. It's just, and I don't want to throw anybody under the bus or say anything that can be interpreted negatively, but Mary's absolutely right. If you, if you are a teacher who follows the program that we have, so on, on the first day of school, you're doing lesson one point one, and you do all the pages in one point one. And then on the second day of school, you do one point two, and you go through that book, which many of our teachers were trained to do by our previous curriculum director and previous administration. The program moves very, very quickly, and kids who don't get it on the first day then find that they're falling behind very quickly. So what my job in Bedford is, as a, as a math tutor, is I, I get the kids who don't qualify for special services, but they're not quite, they haven't mastered the skills necessary to be successful with the day-to-day programs and the curriculum. And I was just talking with the other support teachers, in math in particular today. And we all feel as though it's, it's a double-edged sword because there's always a pressure to get through the book so that you cover all of the concepts that the kids need to know. And so, you know, the kids who are keeping on track are, are getting what they need. But when a kid doesn't understand, you know, number sense, or understand that I can look at, at a group of things and pair them as twos, they're not going to be able to skip count by twos, which means they're not going to be, really understand grouping things and then multiplication. You know, so, so it, those kids that kind of get, get draw, you know, brought along day by day by day by day, but don't really master the concepts behind the assignments, end up having a much harder time catching up later.
So is Bedford just, I mean, now granted, I'm using Bedford, who is also like leaps and bounds above even like Wyndham, right?
Right.
So I'm using, I'm using like the, apparently the gold standard here, so I don't need to be.
Right, right.
It is, I mean.
But so what, so I mean, but it shouldn't be impossible to emulate.
Right.
No, not at all.
Nope, it's not. A lot of it is, they do follow, they do follow the book. They do have a scope and sequence set out at the beginning of the year that by this date, you should be through these chapters so that, you know, the, all the teachers are on the same pace as each other so that they're covering the concepts. But I think something that they do is they really have good support systems in place where if a kid is falling behind, they make sure that that child is either receiving extra help or extra support or going to tutors in order to fill the gaps that they might have so that they can continue to be successful, so they can keep their head above water, basically. And something that we even struggle with, I mean, the special educators and the tutors, we talked about it today, is that balance. Like, if I have a student who is really struggling in multiplication, but that's what we're working on in class, I have an obligation to keep them up with the rest of their class, but also I have to go back and relearn place value, learn what hundreds and tens and ones are before I can multiply them. So it's just, it's very, it's very difficult, but they also bring in a lot of other resources instead of just the book. So what, you know, what I try to do as a tutor is I know where they are in class and I understand the concepts, but I bring it back to, okay, we're going to do it with blocks today. Today, we're going to do it with bingo chips and play this game. And today, we're going to do it this way. So there's, you know, we go back, you know, I just, I'm able to back them up to, we'll start concrete, and then we'll do it with symbols, and then we'll talk about it abstractly kind of along the way.
And I will say that we've... It's a, it's tough to switch a programmatic culture. We tried in terms of, you know, we brought in, because with Mike coming from Bedford, like, we brought in Bill Atwood, one of the first years.
He's been spending the year in my school this year. He's phenomenal.
And he is, like, Bedford raves about him and the work that he's done with teaching mathematical language. It completely fell flat here, to the point that we, like, we kept bringing him in, and it got to the point where people were like, stop.
Are there any major changes in their? Are there any major changes in their or major differences between their curriculum and ours? Because we said, you know, we talked about program and curriculum, right? Program is identical. So then.
Their curriculum is the same because it's based on the state standards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we clearly have some work to do to your point, so we'll look forward to.
And I think another thing that they do, eh, you know, I just met John today and his his title is he's the data and accountability something.
They have curriculum people at each level.
Right.
That are able to spend. Every day digging in with PLCs and teams around data. And I will tell you this, you know, we have a lot of. Conversations at the admin level about the data. But I don't know how much of that is being. Tripling all the way down. Um, you know, we are, we have a structure in place that we're s- we should be having a district data team. And building-based data teams. Our building-based data teams have not really taken off. They have LMS is the one that has said, yes, we are running a data team. The other two buildings have said, we just, we haven't been able to 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 get it off the ground. So it's extremely difficult to run a district data team. When we don't have building.
Yeah.
Data, you know.
Bedford is just extremely well-resourced.
And and the other piece is that we were headed there. We were, um, you know, prior to, and I know this is always every, everybody hates to hear it, but prior to the pandemic, we spent the summer. Training teachers and admin on data protocols and data norms and how to look at data and how to really run PLCs. And they were just starting to get off the ground and really become something people were comfortable with and we shut down. And as we've come back and tried to make that a priority, there are other things that people see as bigger priorities. So this has not gotten the attention. Looking at the data to help drive the instruction has been pushed aside. I'll be completely honest. And it kills me because I'm a wicked data geek. As you can tell, I I spend a lot of time crunching this data.
Any other questions? Any other updates?
That was really it.
All right. Ms. Ames, any questions from your side?
No.
Okay. Thank you for your update this evening. Uh, we'll move on with our agenda this evening and over to our student representatives for the update tonight. Welcome.
Um, before I begin, I just want to say that we do have the academic page just because we haven't had much school because last week was break, but next presentation we'll have one.
Thank you.
Should I go?
Uh, we do, the board has it in front of us in the agenda. Yep.
So um, boys across, they're actually seven and one. We won. We were up thirteen one when I left, so. Yeah, we played Stevens, went good.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Uh, baseball six one. Their next game is away uh this Friday. Track had a meet yesterday. The boys placed fifth and the girls placed fourth. Uh, girls across is one and four. Their next game is today away against Saint Thomas. And softball is two and four. Their next uh game was actually today against Palom and I looked over and we were up like twelve oh, so I'm pretty sure we're three and four now.
So for recent past activities, just students and staff had a great spring break last week.
And then students and teachers are still doing digital portfolios to demonstrate and take accountability of their learning. And prom tickets are being sold at lunches. They start at sixty-five and they're now eighty dollars.
For upcoming events, seniors have senior project evaluation and community night on the ninth of May, six to eight. AP exams start the week of the fourth of May. And so far, that's pretty much it.
That's it, huh?
Yep.
Quick update this evening.
I stripped the whole week off.
Well, hopefully you had a good a good spring break.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. All right. Any questions for our student representatives this evening? All right, hearing none. We're moving on to our community consent on agenda. I don't know what happened here.
Peters.
Two-hour agenda this evening. Uh, that's all right. So we have community input this evening. Just as a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Public comments shall be made without exception of a response by any school member to matters raised by such commentary. Uh, we have Mr. Solzen with us this evening for community input.
Yeah, so I'm Corey Solzen. I'm the fifth grade teacher in this school and I just um, since we're talking about fifth grade and mentioned it and I know it's not just about fifth grade. But I can give you some insight on the educational piece, uh, because you're not in the school, so you don't know some of the things. So I want to make sure that. We kind of share that information, right? If you don't know, then how can you start fixing it and looking at different things? So some of the things that I would recommend looking at, um, we pulled our math tutor. So in LMS, we had one math tutor. And she has been our eighth grade teacher all year. So when we're looking at tutors, you have how many in your school?
Two.
Two. So we had one and it's she's been pulled the entire year. So unfortunately. As a fifth grade math teacher, I had an amazing tutor and I had a month and a half with her. And we had really good things started and we lost all that, all of the in-class support, all of the small pull-out groups that she could do. Because she knows what's happening and we worked together really well last year and we saw some growth and that transitioned to sixth grade, but they lost her too. So uh, when we talk about tutors, like we don't have a tutor, especially at the middle school, so that makes it really tough to be able to say that they're getting support. They get nothing but their teacher unless they have a pair.
Yeah, that is a budget position. We didn't, did we not post for it or did we just not find anyone to fill it?
I don't think we found somebody for the long-term teacher, so they had to push that position into that. So I mean, it's still funded.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so to keep this shirt, uh, because I only have two minutes, um, so we're down pairs in the district, so students aren't getting with the support. Which means that it falls on the teachers, so not everyone gets as much focus as they deserve. Um, last year's fifth graders, um, they should have been a smaller class. We really, I mean, I wasn't as involved because I was becoming a new fifth grade teacher. But there was a waffling a lot on one student. Are if one student leaves, then we can not hire a teacher and right? If you're waffling on one student, hire the teacher, it benefits all. And so the sixth sixth grade, which was last year's results that you'd look at as fifth graders. There's, they have some deficits. They have some pieces and they have some other needs. I mean, not just from COVID, but math, other other pieces. So. Looking at that, um, pushback from parents. So talking about looking at um, doing a program versus curriculum. Um, Litchfield's very traditional and new practices and best best practices, what really is out there if you go to the best practices, best. Ma- um, Greg Tang and Graham Pletchy, like any um of these mathematicians, they're going to tell you that things that are non-traditional. Are best and it's working. Um, and it's scary. It's very different and it's very different than just using a scripted program. Which some kids benefit from and some kids don't. So um, that's just very different and Litchfield is very traditional. Um, and I see growth. So like with SAS, I could tell you who's a one, two, three, or four. That's called competency. Litchfield, again, because it's traditional, we're not doing competencies. So I could tell you who's a one, who's a two, who's a three, who's a four, but. I already scores, power school grades, none of that comes to the same. It really is different when you're doing true competencies versus um pieces and scores. So. Um, I'm over my time. I'm happy to talk as much as you'd like and collaborate and share information because I think that's really important. That's why I'm here. Um, so please let me know anything I can do to help because I think this is something that we could work together and strengthen this for our district and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for the information, Ms.
All right, we have no other community with us this evening. So with that, I will close our first community input. There will be a second community input a little bit later in tonight's agenda. Uh, and with that, we'll move into correspondence. Ms. Ames, I know you're under the weather this evening. I'm not sure if correspondence is ready or available tonight.
It is ready. Thankfully with late week, I'm happy to go through it. I'm also happy to um just email it around, whatever you would like to do.
Yeah, if you don't mind just reading it quickly if it's light, that'd be great.
That's fine. Can you guys hear me okay?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
Uh, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Dr. Jettie printed an email to the school board regarding an action about a legal opinion on having a school board retreat. And getting back to that through after vacation. On April eighteenth, Mr. Lawton emailed the board um with an update regarding his call with Kyle Barker and him attending the April twenty-four facilities meeting. On April nineteenth, Ann and Maratti circulated a manifest. On April nineteenth, Mr. Makler emailed the board requesting board approval for Mr. Parker to come to the April twenty-four. Facilities meeting and all board members responded and approved of that. On April twenty-sixth, Ms. Harrison emailed the board circulating a Facebook post regarding the LMS solar project, battery storage and connectivity agreements. There were responses from Mr. Carter and Mr. Jackson. On April twenty-fourth, Ann and Maratti circulated another manifest. On April twenty-sixth, Nate Burgess circulated the five-one agenda. On April thirtieth, Mallory McIndler was counseling and circulated an invite to the board to attend the PHS class between four academic influence banquet. On April thirtieth, Ann and Maratti circulated a third manifest to the board. On May first, Jan Hallen circulated the April non-public minutes. Then on May first, Ben Grant, LMS principal circulated the LMS end of year um. For bed dates and then uh left schools, the other principals added anything for us. And that brings this print on global.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ames, for that update. Appreciate it. Any other correspondence to mention from any of the board members? Nope. Okay, moving on. We'll move into general business this evening and with that, we have, we'll start with the superintendent's report. Superintendent Jettie, welcome back. Hopefully you had a good break as well and we look forward to your update.
Thank you, but I also brought some sickness back with me and so you're better off than I'm here and not there, so. But just quickly, I'm getting an awful headache. I can't figure out how to stop. Sound okay on your end?
It does, yes.
Right, perfect. So from the uh, an update to the board on climate survey. As you remember, we contracted with the Center for School Climate and Learning uh, over a year ago. And we administered these big measures uh survey last year. Now we have completed the year two with those teams and we will be re-administering the survey um in the coming weeks. It'll be, I I I can't imagine the date if it's next week or a week after, but the survey is coming up. So I just wanted to draw to board's attention that the survey is of support to the entire community on our website. And if you click that link uh to the survey. It is the technical link that is available on the website. So members who are coming here, this survey will be administered to students. And we have also emailed all of our families to let them know that if they wish to opt out of the survey. You can do so by calling out the board or letting the principals know uh by describing that they would uh opt their tribe out of the survey. And then they would uh not have to do that survey. So um, here we have a great survey. I think there were a couple of students across the district who uh who's paying to opt out of the survey. So this will be uh be a repeat this year and we can see if the work event going on climate has had any measurable impact on the survey results. So let me pause and see if there are questions from the board about the survey for climate.
Any questions from board members? Nope. We appreciate the circulation by Ms. Sullivan out to the community, out to the family members of our schools. Um, and hopefully if there's any feedback, that will be channeled up.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Um, and again, uh, here it is on on television for the community. If there's anyone that wishes to review the survey. And it is available to you. Um, and if you wish to opt a student in, just let us know that by private. Uh, the second thing I'd like to do is enrollment report. Again, relatively seceding, not much to see here, but our enrollment status is same. Uh, with the biggest change being at the high school and addition of two students. And there appears one tenth grade, one and a half grade.
Excellent. Thank you for the enrollment report. Always good to see the numbers. Any questions for the superintendent this evening?
And one of the highlights is remember now we have the kindergarten registration, so.
Yes.
We've gone from sixty-four to sixty-six to sixty-nine as a big group team. So um, the kindergarten numbers are still really strong, um, but there's there's. At the threshold, there um, the four classes will cover the current enrollment. So if there are any. Out there with kindergartners who have not enrolled and curricula, get that enrollment completed because we watch that number very closely.
Absolutely. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Totten for a business and operations update this evening.
Yeah, so just wanted to kind of follow up on uh something that started from the community as far as looking to help out with the facilities. So that went into correspondence to the school board. Uh, we talked about it at the last school board meeting, so kind of looking at what that could really look like. And any liability that could come from that. Uh, so no surprise when I talk to Primex, we talk through, you know, safer work. And more hazardous type work. So safer work, it's it's really down to that RSA five oh eight seventeen. And that's if the uh volunteer has a scope that they're working within, then they are kind of protected from that as well. And obviously, we we would still want to make sure that they are comfortable with the work that they're doing, whether that's spreading mulch. And if they need any safety equipment, that we'd be providing that for them as well. So that's kind of the easier part of it. The the tougher part is that if they're going to be doing more of that hazardous type of work, whether they're using saws, whether they're up on on ladders. Um, work that is more likely to cause an injury. So what is recommended is working with a company. That that's that does that work, that would agree to do a zero-cost contract. Uh, so working with Primex, uh, so their specialist, they also have a lawyer there. Um, we we came up with this example of a zero-cost contract. I haven't run this by our lawyers yet because I wanted to just bring it forward to the board. Uh, because right now that costs us zero dollars to create that contract, but obviously bring it to our lawyers, you know, there's going to be a charge for that. Uh, but with that, what we tried to do was have a simplified contract. So if you sign, if if we go off an RFQ, RFP. And as we signs a contract, it is pages long that people have to kind of sign and agree to. Where if there's a local company that that wants to help out the school, we don't want them to have to bring the contract to their lawyer. We want it to make sense. We want to protect protect both us and them. Um, so we tried to kind of really. Narrow it down to what would be key for for both both parties. Uh, so again, this is an example. So if we had some people who came in and they wanted to kind of help with the. The eves at the elementary school and get up on a ladder and eh kind of work with putting some more trim board up up there. Um, that we 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 really would want to not just have any volunteer do that. We'd want to kind of have a company. That already has kind of their own workers comp that's agreeing to kind of help us out. And usually that company would come from Litchfield because it's their community. It's their their school as well. So uh, different things that if there was a decision to kind of host a day or days. Uh, things that we would want to make sure that are happening in order to make sure it's safe, um, as well as that we're protected. So I don't know if there's questions on that.
I think the only thing that I would say is um, it my understanding or I guess maybe belief was that. We were more likely probably looking at individuals wanting to help as opposed to companies. So I don't know.
I mean, it's a community member that wants to, you know, help with a minor task.
Right. I don't think that the company thing would, that's really just if we had like a company that was.
Well, I think one of the correspondence was about doing, and which is which is great. Like if I were to volunteer in in my hometown, like I feel comfortable around a saw. So I would volunteer for that, but they'd probably say, no, thank you. So same type of thing too. So if somebody does want to volunteer for more of that. Hazardous type of thing, we gotta kind of take a pause on there and really kind of only push it towards. People who work for an actual company who are willing to sign that, so.
Well, I can speak for one volunteer who has been doing hazardous things. Um, as a volunteer.
As a volunteer, yeah.
And that will impede one of our programs that I'm closely involved with. So. I mean, if this is, if this falls under something, if this falls under maintenance, groundskeeping, that kind of thing, I wonder.
This was more of just like a one-off type of thing, a one day.
If we're overcomplicating it, you know? I mean, I know we we're we're we're, we have protections we have to.
Right, right.
Carry, but it feels it feels like a little over-engineered. My fir- my just got reaction to this.
I think everything's getting over-engineered sometimes, so I I would agree with that. Um. But in order, you you know, we have to run through our insurance company and this is the the information that they're guiding us with.
So would the recommendation then be to? So, so would the recommendation then be to, I, I mean, like, my husband would be happy to fill out this form that's, that's attached here, right? The service statement and agreement.
Yeah, but they're looking for people that, that, that whole thing is basically saying, also, I'm carrying insurance.
Right, which he does.
He carries like, I mean, wasn't it, hold on, let me open it up. Wasn't it like?
Well, what kind of insurance?
A million dollars of liability insurance.
I think that was for the company, right?
The overall policy.
And so the company, and, and those, again, it's, it's a rough draft of that. It doesn't have to look exactly like that.
Sure, where you have to do the work off-site and transport it.
Which he couldn't do.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I think, I mean, I mean, we have, I, I'm assuming it's, I'm not the, we're not the only ones who do, who are, you know, putting ourselves in any kind of risk way. I assume robotics has, you know, welding components and electrical work and, and all those kinds of things. I mean, how, how deep are we going on this?
Well, I, I think some of the differences too is that, uh, there's different levels of volunteers. There, there are volunteers that anyone can come and, and, and sure, join us type of thing, and then there's volunteers that are more picked too, or more go through a process, which would be both drama and robotics. It's, it's not like come one, come all, do whatever you want type of thing there. So.
Well, if that's what should be, that's, isn't what has been happening. So, maybe we should talk offline about, about what's going on and what we need to do to, moving forward, make sure everybody's covered.
Okay, so.
Were you looking for action on this?
No, the board was just looking for information.
Okay.
So, this, this was.
Great information. It's what I, it's what I expected.
This is not us bringing it to, the board, the board asked for information. So, this is us coming back with information.
I don't want to be a lawyer.
Okay, alright. Cause I'm like.
Yeah, yeah. All right, excellent. Uh, Ms. Ames, any thoughts or comments on this?
I mean, obviously, I think it kind of is similar to the playground situation, right? The more you dig on something with insurance and coverage, the more pushback you're going to get, the more concern about liability, and then are you on notice, and all of those different questions. I mean, I think for me, I just kind of wanted to know, could a group of volunteers go to GMS and spruce up the outside, you know? Or can they work on mulch, or can they, you know, do some of the more basic things? Could I send them some small wood or anything like that? No, um, but are there options?
So, they can definitely do a lot of the simple stuff. So, I mean, that, that is very clear that, that's a, a, a great use of volunteers, an easier use of volunteers. I mean, even power washing that they can do, so, um.
Yeah, so I think we just need to have a list of tasks that if a volunteer says, I want to help, what can I do? These are some people who need doing, and have a way.
Can I help paint?
Yes, but none on the line.
Yeah, only up to this hour.
But Dave Ross can get on the line.
Yeah, okay. So, I think we take that as an, as a, as a next step, is let's try to identify the tasks that volunteers can do, um, safely and within kind of the, the boundaries that will be accepted, and go from there.
So. Let's go.
Thank you. There you go. Right?
Yep.
All right, uh, any other comments on this one? Mr. Totten, anything else from your side this evening?
Nothing, uh, this evening. Next, next week, we'll get, um, a little bit closer to kind of starting presenting some of the initial where we might be with fund balance. Again, it's, it'd still be early at that point, um, but no surprise, a majority of our fund balance is going to come from the fact that we are not staffed to the level that we would like to be, staffed to the level which we are allowed to be, um, and that's not from a lack of effort of trying to get staffed that way. That's just because there's a lot of school districts that are down in certain staffs, so.
So, that was a, a question at the budget meeting, which, meeting which I actually left out of my notes. Um, can we have an idea of where we're going to be fund balance-wise?
So, more, more at next meeting.
Next meeting.
So, yeah. So, right now, what we're, we're doing is we're making sure that as we're looking at employees, um, what's being in the system is our current employees and any employee that has left. Some, sometimes the system encumbers the money and it doesn't release it as, and so we just got to double check on that to make sure it's, it's being released, uh, because obviously, that person who left employment, uh, this year is no longer getting paid. And then we got to look at the encumbrances that people have put in, uh, for certain bills, and a lot of times, you know, they might have put in like, we expect this to cost five hundred dollars and it costs four hundred and eighty dollars, so you have that twenty dollars which were in connection with them, you know? Can we just clear this and know that that twenty dollars is going to come for fund balance, or are you still going to use that twenty dollars type of thing? So, we're in that communication process right now.
In terms of, um, fund balance, and it's actually going in line with manifests that we're getting through here as well, is there a way, as we go through the manifest every other week and as we review it, to get a kind of a running tool of where we are on the remaining fund balances? I, I guess my, my challenge also with manifests, right, is I have no idea how all of these expenses that we're signing off and authorizing, how it stacks up against our fund balance and, and what we're paying it from, right?
I mean, it's our budget.
I guess it's our budget, right? What's voter approved, right? So, as we're signing, I, and, 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 you know, as we're signing a three hundred thousand dollar manifest for payroll, right? How does that now subtract from the overall budget of what was voter approved, and where do we, where do we stand with that?
So, you see some of that in the monthly reports that come out, um, that end at a certain end of the period. Um, so we just finished period ten, and in that year, you'll see that your period expenses, um, as well as what is still encumbered in there too. Now, does it, y- you know, with that period expenses, if you're talking about personnel manifest, you should be able to kind of add up the manifest for, for that period and it'll equal what E-Finance is saying as well, but it's, uh, so it is correlated to the reports that are coming out of E-Finance. Now, if somebody is going into the, the negatives on an account, um, then they need to transfer money. That's where, why you see a lot of the transfers that, that come over. Um, so, I can't think of a recent one, um, but, but if they need to overexpend, and again, it's normal for people to overexpend in a certain area because they're making this budget eighteen months before they, they kind of, they're starting to, to spend on it too. So, that's not a, an unheard of thing, so, but they would have to then take money from someplace else in their budget in order to cover it. Now, some things, we know we're overexpending. Add a district tuition, we know we're overexpending. Um, voc, we know we're overexpending. So, we're not necessarily transferring money in there, uh, because we know we're overspending, but we also know that there's going to be savings other places in the budget. So, but most, i- if you're talking about like a teacher buying something for their class, they have to be able to afford it within their budget.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. Any other questions for Mr. Totten this evening? No? Okay, hearing done. Uh, we will move into the public minutes approval from April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Just before going on, I raised my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, just one quick thing I need to add. So, uh, is Mary Woodman still in there, or Mary Sullivan still in the room?
No, yeah, she's, she's not.
Mary and I talked today, the state basically got audited and the federal government relative to, uh, grant funds. Um, and they were, uh, reprimanded pretty hard for the way they administered the grant fund and the way that trickled out. So, state level, uh, cleanup that needed to happen. And, um, as a result of that, the assurances that we do every year, and the board chair that sits in every year, uh, those must have submitted no later than June first. And we just have copies of those that were handed out to us recently. So, bringing this all to the board's attention because, um, we have exactly one moment between now and, I'm sorry, not major, distinct, we have one meeting left. And that's, uh, May fifteenth meeting. So, I'm going to email those out to everybody in the board in advance of that meeting, and if there are questions that could turn, I would ask you to make those two, like, news of those priorities moving, and that way, we can leave those signed on the fifteenth and submit it. Um, what they're telling us is that if you don't keep that that money, you oversee the E federal one, not the E situation with Litchfield, so. Um, and this is all, can cut off the press in the moment, so I just want the board to be aware that the assurances, um, need to be reviewed. And if you have any questions, don't let us know that.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing that circulated through email, and more to come on the fifteenth when we meet, and hopefully, a signature by them.
Perfect, thank you. And I just, uh, I, I got to jump out through my report, so, um, I apologize if I was in there earlier, but again, this just unfolded today, so here we are.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right, now shifting gears into public minutes from April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? If so, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Klansky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shoemaker. Any additional discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Klansky?
Hi.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Hi.
I'm an I. Ms. Harrison?
Hi.
And Ms. Ames.
Hi.
The minutes from April seventeenth, public minutes are approved five zero zero. Thank you very much. Uh, moving into new business policy updates, uh, I know everyone was enjoying some time off last week's spring break. I'm not sure if the policy committee has had an opportunity to meet quite yet.
No, there's no updates yet, but we hope to have one for the May fifteenth meeting.
Gotcha, okay. So, we will remove that from tonight's agenda, and hopefully, more to come at our next meeting on policies. Uh, we're now moving into old business, and on here, we have the budget committee timeline. Um, Mr. Klansky, I, I know you graciously covered the budget committee meeting last week. What were the discussions and what, what's kind of the next steps with the budget committee timeline?
Budget committee is, at least at this point, not willing to give up that fourteenth state. They would like to keep that for themselves, but they are willing to discuss after we have the new superintendent in place and a new BA, and be more flexible, but for now, they would like to keep that meeting for the, for the, for themselves.
Interesting, okay. Well, I mean, look, as long as there's some flexibility allowed, right, and knowing that we have a new team coming in, knowing that, uh, with this past year, there were changes to our timeline, uh, we'll respectfully reserve, uh, uh, an additional time, additional cycles for our own review, uh, so it can be complete and thorough and accurate before it goes to the budget committee.
Again, they did say they would be, as we get to the end of our school year and they meet the new team, if need be, they will, there'll be some, there'll be some flexibility there.
Gotcha, excellent. And I also, uh, happened to pick up on a comment that the, the budget committee would like to meet our new superintendent.
Yes.
Uh, I have reached out to, uh, Mr. O'Connell, and he, uh, is tentatively scheduled to join the budget committee meeting in June. So, I'm working on that. Anything else?
Andrew, can I ask a question?
Please.
The timeline that's set up by the budget committee, I mean, that's for planning purposes and voluntary, correct?
It is for planning purposes, yes, absolutely, and I think the expectation here is that some of the dates can change a little bit, but directionally, I think it, it, the budget committee looks for it to be accurate. Uh, I think lesson learned from this past year is some of the bu-, some of the budget committee members were, um, were very, uh, direct on sticking to some of these dates, uh, even though we had some, some last minute changes or delays. I, I don't want to say delays, just updates on our side, uh, as a result of the new school, which warranted some changes to the meeting schedule. So, I don't know what that's going to look like for the next year as a result of work from the FIC, so I would just continue to appreciate budget committee flexibility, uh, as we, as we progress throughout the year and, and see where we land.
I, I do think it's worth noting that, you know, they, they did express some frustration last year about a commitment that was made around this time to certain deadlines and, you know, not appreciating that not being adhered to. So, I think it's just, you know, it's worth, it, it's worth reiterating that we are, you know, worried about committing to those right now, and we have shared those specific concerns. So, as long as it's, you know, just on the record that we've, you know, we're trying early in the process to identify potential things so that there's no surprises down the road, it's the best we can do.
Yep, I think it's the best we can do as well at the moment.
We also talked about Ms., the departure of Mr. Totten. Um, wanted to express their appreciation of all the work that you did, Doug, and, uh, how you were so well-prepared, prepared early last year. They're truly appreciated and, uh, indicated that it's a, it's a good, a big loss for the district, and, um, I think we all echo those, those same sentiments, so.
Thank you for sharing.
All right, uh, moving into LMS solar and the project update. I'm not sure, uh, Mike, Superintendent Jenny, if I'm turning that over to you or Mr. Totten?
Yep, that's, that's fine. Um, so, we continue to make progress down at LMS. Uh, we were, I think Doug and I were on the roof right before school vacation week, taking a look at the status of the project. Um, I spoke with K, Aken, who is our project coordinator today, um, and so more materials have arrived as, as, um, as latest today. Uh, so, like the rack heat system or the inverter, uh, that was delivered, so, pretty exciting, depressing along. Um, at your request, uh, Mr. Quater, I have contacted, I, I'm going to hand you a couple of dates that we can meet, um, so that we can have an onsite. Um, we'll get you right up on the roof and be able to take a look at the project, where it stands, and, um, they will be able to answer any questions regarding, uh, where we are with batteries and all the other, um, materials relative to the project. The intent would be that, um, Doug and I would participate in that meeting and develop an invite to O'Connell, uh, so that he's able to get brief on what we plan, um, because, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not certain what will be completed by June period. We want to make sure that everybody knows exactly where we've been and where we're going, and, uh, what that's going to look like to whoever's moved hand off to.
Yeah.
Look, email me on meeting, um, and hopefully, it'll be a date for everybody.
I appreciate you, uh, you arranging that. Uh, one of the things that I'm trying to ensure that we do with Mr. Totten's departure as well as Superintendent Jay's departure is that there's some type of continuity on the remaining work for this project, given that will likely continue post, post-June.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so, I have requested a meeting with, um, the solar company and K, who's being referenced, uh, just so we can ensure that our questions are being answered as a board. So, if you do have questions specific for solar, please send them to me in an email, so I can be sure to ask them when we have this meeting.
Do you have a million dollars of coverage before you go on the roof?
I do.
He doesn't need it. He just has to stay away from the air.
So, this was a, a conversation at the budget committee too, is the status of that, if there's going to be additional costs to us to, when the batteries are, the factory's done, the batteries are built.
So, let's get all those questions in, right? I can certainly send, uh, I know Chairman Sun i- is diligent about watching our meetings. If the budget committee certainly has questions, I would encourage them to send them in as well. I want to make sure all of our questions are answered, um, while we have the time together. All right.
And, and a quick answer to that, Peter, is no. So, per, the PPA has the dollar amount to fix. Um, and so, whether the batteries are there or not, the, the PPA is the amount that we're going to pay for, like purchases. It actually means that the investors are making less money because the batteries aren't there to buffer and to store up if they're during high production time, like, or something. So, that's on them. It's no pain for them without the batteries. If you're fixing them, when we have to make the purchase of the system, the value of the system is significantly less without the battery system, and we will, you, you know, we will pay less for it at that point because the fair market value that would be reduced might not have any batteries. Not that that's a cap, but that would be the end of the question. The purchase of the gray will be less expensive than purchasing an array and a battery.
Got it. Okay. Uh, any other questions on solar? All right, we'll move into facilities this evening, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Shoemaker.
Well, facilities is, uh, popping every meeting. We got a, we got a big, big room full of people that continue to participate, so it's been really good. Um, the last meeting, so our intention at the last meeting was to kind of create more format to the facilities committee because it's huge now. Um, but, uh, we also felt it was important to try to have Kyle Barker come in and give an update on, uh, some of the work that he's already done because there's a lot of new members. There's just all, it just made sense to try to get everyone on the same page, to understand what's been looked at, to what degrees. Um, so the majority of that meeting was taken up by, um, him either presenting or people asking questions. It, it was kind of navigated by Dan going through some of the, uh, what Kyle has coined the thousand cuts over at GMS. Like, it's not, you know, one big issue that we can point to. It's a lot of little ones, um, but that just evolved into conversation on every, every point. Um, before I forget, I would like to mention that, uh, Mr. O'Connell was there. Uh, he joined us, and I embarrassingly did not introduce him to anyone, uh, so everyone was wondering, the guy sitting up front, he introduced himself. I've apologized to him like six times already, but, um, I will make sure to introduce him at the next one. I was so focused on getting through the agenda that I didn't do that. Um, the, uh, the biggest part of what, what we're doing right now and where we're trying to go, aside from creating some structure to this group, is, um, there is sort of like, uh, ages of, uh, knowledge about this building and the problems that have kind of been passed down. And, uh, some, in, in some regards, some of the things that are stated about the building are accurate, some of them may be slightly inaccurate. And so, what we really are trying to do is hone in on what are the, what is the accurate state of the building? What, what are the actual problems and what is the extent of those problems, right? So, like, a good example is there's been so much communication around like, oh, there's, there's mold in the building, but mold's not a huge issue in the building. There's moisture in the building. There's moisture in the building, but the moisture is not spurting up through the floor. It's, there's just a lot of reasons around things. So we're trying to get good information out there and so the biggest thing we're trying to do right now is really identify what's going on, um, and, and what we need to contend with. So, um, I think the, the group wants to, the group asked some questions. Uh, one of them was about the age of the roof, which I believe Dan replied back and emailed us. I don't know, um, there was also a question about the, uh, like window replacements, when we've had window replacements. Did Dan get that, those answers too? I didn't see in the email.
No.
Okay. So we'll have to follow up on that. Um, the, um, one question, Mike, I don't know if, if you're the right person to ask this. I am admittedly the worst person at using Google. I, it, it just does not make sense to me. I don't know why. But do we have, do we have a drive that's dedicated to FIC? Okay. I need to like figure out how to get in there because people are asking for documents and I want to make sure I get them to them. Um, but it's been hard for me to wrap my head around it. I know some of them are on the website, but I think I just need to try to organize them in the drive to try to make it a little easier. The other thing I was wondering is, um, because of the amount of people on the group, is there a way to create a listserv? You know how we have like school board? Is there a way to create a listserv that's, uh, FIC and if so, how do I, you know, who would I go about doing that with? Is that something I can do?
Matt, I can help you. So you, you can create your own personal list again.
Okay.
I'll, I'll show you how to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Um, it's a relatively simple task. I would suggest that we, um, gosh, I'm, I'm trying to think if I even have access anymore to spreadsheet of who's signed up, um, because I think learning things going forward would be important since attendance, so we know who is, who attended each meeting.
Right.
You know, I don't know if we commit of, of these meetings. Um, so we just want to think our way through some of that because it's a volatile information very quickly and we just want to make sure we stay ahead of that. So why don't you and I connect online and figure out how to organize?
We want to talk about Jan doing this.
Oh yeah, that was the other thing too, is like in terms of minutes for that, uh, group, like, can we, can we have Jan with the minutes for that?
I, I, I'm not sure. Uh, we, we have a contract with Jan for school board minutes. Uh, I think that would be an extension of our contract and expanded services.
I'm wondering for that particular group if it makes sense, given the amount of in- information that's going through that. Like, I, I don't think that we can reasonably keep minutes on that.
I struggle with talking and taking notes at the same time as it is.
I, look, I agree. I think, uh, I think it is a, a board that more of minutes to be taken, um, just for proper documentation, potentially any decisions that are made.
Yeah. Um, so I guess what's the mechanism by which we can?
We reach out to Jan?
So Superintendent Jenny, is that, is that, um, is that something that you can action or Renee can action, uh, on behalf of the board to reach out to Jan and see if she has willingness and availability capacity to support minute taking?
Yeah, I, I definitely think I can do that and I'm assuming that our intent is to, um, continue to broadcast all those meetings, so.
Right.
That makes it easier for her to be able to pull that together. Um, I was thinking about like the walkthrough tour day, we wouldn't, there's no way to get in this, right?
No.
On the fly.
Yeah, no, not the walkthrough. Um,
Yep.
But the last.
Let me look into that. Thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you for that.
Um, few more things. Um, so, uh, with respect to state aid, Kyle had mentioned it, uh, that there were some changes in the rules that are proposed changes. I think, Mike, you, you have covered, you may have covered this at one of the meetings too. There's proposed changes to the rules. They're not, uh, voted on yet. And so there was, um, some speculation that we had to let them know by May first that we wanted to be on the list. Um, I believe it was clarified that it's actually May, May first, twenty twenty-five that we had to let them know by because the, the rules aren't voted in yet. So, um, nonetheless, um, you know, Kyle was gonna make a phone call on our behalf just to make sure. Um, Kyle did discuss in our Facilities Committee meeting that, um, his belief is that if we were to go back to them, uh, with updated, with an updated project, that we would actually qualify for, potentially qualify for more money and that the amount that Concord is looking, now we're in second place, truly in second place because of other projects that have either funded or fallen off. Uh, and so because Concord is looking for so much money that we, we would probably be in really good shape. Was it twelve or twelve million? So just an interesting piece that, you know, could apply to both either a renovation or the construction of a new building if we needed to. Kyle was going to update some numbers for us, just in some of the stuff that he's worked on. The committee had a particular interest in, um, the, the nine options that he sourced out. He actually started going through some of them. People had great questions. Um, and he was going to provide some updated numbers. Um, and, uh, I think that that was. Uh, right. Um, one thing that he did bring up to us was that, um, when the RFP and RFQ went out on this project, there was a big passive house, uh, green component to it, um, that was built in. And so he was tasked with sort of operating within the confines of that. Um, and he, he indicated that, um, it may be in the board's interest and the district's interest to remove that requirement, um, from a future proposal and that would potentially save us a considerable amount of money while still, he'd still potentially be able to design to that standard. He did another project. I think that the, the, uh, passive house standard is you have to be under twenty-five EUI. Don't ask him what that means. Uh, but he designed a building that did not have that passive house directive, but he was still at twenty-four. So, um, we could still end up with a very, um, energy efficient building even without that. And that could potentially shave off.
Ten to twenty percent.
So.
Wow.
Yeah. So, um, that was some feedback. Um.
Can I just react to that for a second?
Sure.
It gets really important that we bring people in who can tell you exactly what EUI is and be able to define that for the whole committee, um, because it's interesting to me that Kyle was saying he could achieve it without doing it. In other words, if he's going to get to an EUI of twenty-four, then he's doing passive house. So I'm really not sure where this ten or twenty percent is coming from. So I think we should understand exactly what our.
Yeah. I, I, did he say this during the meeting or was this some aside conversation?
It was during the meeting.
I, my understanding was you can, you can still have a very efficient building, but not meet passive house certification.
Correct.
So I think that was what Kyle was saying.
Right. He, he wouldn't have gotten the passive house certification on it, but he, the EUI, he still hit an EUI of under twenty-five with that.
I disagree. I think he was saying.
That, that's what he said, wasn't it?
That's a, that's a.
Then that would be passive house. So.
Right, but I, I don't know what all, all the other regulatory stuff has to do with passive.
We could clarify.
But that measurement, he said he could still get to without having to meet all the other qualifications.
Okay.
But I, I think his point, I think the ultimate point that he made though, which, uh, you know, to not get words minces, that he can design a very efficient building still.
Right.
Um, without the passive house requirement. So, um, you know, just something to consider, given that the project failed, you know, it was a forty-four million dollar project that, you know. So I think that the only thing that, like where we're at, um, is we have an open RFQ and RFP, um, and a team of people that are, at my understanding, is waiting to kind of know what the next steps are. And so I'm, you know, wondering if we need to take action on that at this point.
And close that RFP?
Right.
That contract?
Correct.
Right.
And basically discharge the team and move forward, you know, evaluate, continue to evaluate our options.
I think at this point, while I still see Kyle as a very valuable asset as we go through this process, um, the design team that, you know, was, did the schematics for the building, the Basin Studios, team, I think. I don't know.
Ashley McGraw.
Ashley McGraw and the Basin Studios. I don't know that they have any work to do anymore because that project failed. Do you have any input into that, Doug, or am I?
So, um, I, I think, you know, with a much larger community presence, which is a, a great thing that that's happening, um, you know, things have definitely slowed down and I think it's somewhat fair to, to let people know where, where they stand. Um, so I, I agree. I think having Kyle kind of continue on makes sense because he just has a background of knowledge, uh, but there's an extended team that might not make sense. So they can, they can, I mean, it's, it's for our benefit and, and for their benefit.
Is that all of the same package though?
I think we need to, um, I think we need to basically issue a letter saying that, you know, the, the project failed. We're, you know, not going to be moving forward at this point and then we can start to reevaluate what we're going to do.
But is that a termination of the contract or how does that, how does that work?
So we have multiple contracts. We have a contract with Bonnet Page and Stone.
Yeah.
And then we have a, a contract with Barker Associates, which has brought in Basin Studio within that contract. It's a combined contract. And then we did have the RFP for the owner's agent, which we had everyone submitted that wanted to, but we stopped it at that point because of the vote.
Right.
Um, so we haven't even interviewed those people. All those people know that the vote did not go through, so they, they know that we're not looking to bring them in for interviews. But those were the three groups of RFPs that are in different stages in a way, so.
Yep. So I do think that notification needs to be sent, uh, to close, to close out that, that scoped work at one point, uh, given the, given the large vote.
So we're looking for like an official.
Yep.
Notification towards both Barker.
Letter thanking them for their assistance, but as, you know, as they're aware that the project did not pass and, you know, we are going to be evaluating other options.
Does that mean that we need to ex- extend something else with Kyle?
Um, I don't think at this time we do. I think we, we need to continue to, we need to provide some more direction through the, um, Facilities Committee.
So right now what we are with, with Kyle is a verbal agreement.
Right.
To the hundred and fifty dollars per hour for any work that he does.
Okay.
With, with this.
Okay.
But we, we don't have that in, in writing. But we are in control, especially Peter and Matt, you guys are in control of kind of the hours that, that he's working, more than say I am in control of the hours that he's working on this.
Right. So do we need a contract, a secondary contract with Kyle?
That's what I'm wondering because we don't want.
To have continued support services?
As needed or?
I know that he's, you know, I think he's currently encumbered by this other contract that we have with him. So I can ask him if we, you know, if we're terminating that, what can we do to continue to, you know, consult with him?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I like, I like the idea of having Kyle be available to, to help us brainstorm solutions.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's imperative, right? That we, you know, there's a lot of ideas that are floating around and it helps. We have, you know, people in the committee who have varying degrees of experience in the industry, uh, which has been hugely helpful. Um, but, you know, it's a lot of ideas that are flowing around and it is nice to have, uh, you know, someone who's trained in that who can say, hey, okay, yeah, that's a good point, but here's what you need to actually look at with that. Particularly right now, given that the committee really wants to dive in further to the actual conditions of the building. So our understanding is that.
Do we need Kyle for that?
So we need, we need someone for that. And so the question becomes, who is the right person, right? Like, in my industry, it's like, oh, you go hire a home inspector, right? Well, there's not like a real easy solution to that. So Kyle, um, may be able to help with, help guide some of that stuff. Especially because, again, a lot of the information that we have, we're, we're now understanding has been derived from previous reports that are historical reports. And so, uh, some of the committee has specifically said, hey, it'd be really good to put specific eyes on these things and, and just confirm that there's, hasn't been changes.
Just how bad some of the stuff is, you know?
Right, yeah, sure.
Right.
And I think the board needs to decide as well, how much more do we want to spend on studying the building and the needs? I think that's.
So we continue to have that conversation in the committee. So it's, it, we are very, we continuously come back to the idea of, okay, but what is the cost associated with this?
Right.
And again, if, if it's the, you know, if the committee feels as though it's, uh, money well spent, then they'll recommend to the board that they think that we should do that, but, yeah, I agree.
Right, but I, I think we should have a number in mind, you know, how much, how much, how much more time do we, are we willing to spend on this?
It'll be easier to give you that idea after we go through and see like, okay, you know, like no one, my understanding is that, um, I don't think that in this latest round of work, that, uh, I think it's been mostly based off of reports. I don't think it was based off of physical inspection beyond Kyle went through and like the stuff that he could see. He, he.
Right, right. As far as the needs. But even as far as some of the options that he has explored, he did a lot of work based on enrollment projections and.
Correct. He's updating those numbers. Yeah, he's updating those numbers. So if you watched the meeting, there was discussion about a lot of different options, right? And so, um, you know, the consolidation option has come up a couple of times. Kyle was able to dive further into his analysis, for example, of if you move seventh and eighth to the high school, what some of the limitations of that are. He's going to start, he's going to update some enrollment information and he's going to update some, uh, some of the numbers that he presented on those things to help the committee unders- understand those. It seems, I don't know if, if you agree with this, it seems like the committee's major focus right now is really just trying to understand the building itself. Because I think there is a, a, at least half the committee that feels like they, they're not convinced that a renovation is, is not the best option. And so we want to make sure that we're really investigating that to its fullest.
Agreed.
Okay, well, let's stay close to this, right? I want to stay close to the cost.
Yeah.
Um, that, you know, Mr. Barker's charging us for this work, obviously. I, I do think there's value in having it continue to support and obviously pulling in the expertise that the committee is asking for. But let's stay close to the cost at all.
Uh, and then the, the last thing that I just wanted to mention is, um, in terms of governance with this group, um, my inclination is, you know, we have a big group, but I, I don't, I think at this point we're going to close that group off. You know, if anyone else has interest, they can certainly listen in, but we can't get, we can't grow it bigger.
Getting bigger, yep.
But with that group, we have a great participation and I do think that in terms of, you know, voting rights, I think we're going to be talking about that. I'm inclined to allow all of those, all of the community members to have voting rights in that group. Um, I know that there's some question about, like I don't think the, uh, uh, Ms. Douglas attended as, as part of the Budget Committee. I think she's going to be joining us. I know that the Budget Committee had indicated that they don't want to be voting in that, um, group, but I think everyone else had voting rights. I don't know if the administrators, um, still, if they did or if they still want voting rights, but.
We, we did, but I think that's, you know, it's a new committee, so go ahead and make your, you know, make your buy laws.
I would, I would, I would suggest that there's only one school board member that votes if there's two present though.
That's what Doug had put together, kind of, uh, Doug.
Dan?
Dan. Put together some thoughts and he, he, he had that comment that one, one member should vote.
Yeah, I agree.
I do want to say that I watched the meeting and while it was lengthy and, um, you know, you, you're right, there was great discussion. There were great questions being asked. It's nice to see that, um, people are finally, um, willing to put themselves out there and ask those questions and find out good information. You know, and I think, I think, you know, if it, if it took a failed project to, for people to get involved and do that and be a part of the process, I, you know, then I think it's a, a step in the right direction.
Yeah. The ultimate question that we're going to come to and that I hope to be able to explore with this group is, um, is the question of how much does, as a community, does Litchfield want to invest in the educational aspect, right? Because we talk a lot about the building aspect. We talk a lot about the physical space. There are elements of, yeah, could, could we just, you know, put lipstick on the pig? Sure. But what are the educational impacts? And, um, I think once we get through some of the building impacts, once people can wrap their heads around the building, they'll be able to start processing some of the educational stuff too. So I look forward to that, uh, piece of it. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much for that update. Any other questions on facilities this evening? Hearing none, we'll move into school board comments. Any board members have comments this evening they'd like to share?
There's been a lot of comments already.
I think just as a reminder, right, uh, I know the board was, uh, invited to the, the veterans ceremony this Saturday at ten AM. Just as a reminder that that's, uh, that's happening. And, uh, I know the, the veterans have been doing a lot of work over there over the past couple of days, getting it cleaned up and ready to go for Saturday. So looking forward to that. Uh, we have manifest. Uh, all the manifests now have three signatures, so that is, uh, that's good to go. And, uh, with that, we'll move into our second community input this evening. The time is now seven o'clock. Any other community input for members in the audience tonight? Nope. I'm hearing, uh, no community input, so we'll close our second community input. And with that, uh, that will conclude the public session of our agenda. In pursuit of to RSA ninety-one A, the board will be moving into non-public session. Mainly under RSA ninety-one A, let's see here, uh, C. Is that correct, Superintendent Jenny? Any other items to cover off in non-public this evening?
Uh, we're also covering BD.
Thank you very much. Got it. With that, I'll entertain a motion to move. We have a motion by Mr. Shoemaker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Plansky. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Plansky?
Aye.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
And Ms. Ames?
Aye.
Uh, we will now close our public session, move into non-public. Thank you all for joining. Our next meeting is in two weeks on May fifteenth.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
Hi guys.